We'll stand for the Pledge and Legion of the American Flag and remain standing for our invocation.
Pledge and Legion of the American Flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you tonight as long as we know how, Lord. First, we want to say thank you for being so gracious and good to us. Even in the midst of our sins, you've still been good to us, and we thank you for that. We come now, Lord, thanking you for those who are here tonight, thanking you for this body of leaders, and asking you, Lord, to guide our tongue, guide our minds as we make decisions in the interest of these your people in this city and the surrounding areas. We're not selfish, Lord, in our prayer. We know there's death all around us, and we pray for those families who will bereave, pray that you'll comfort, strengthen, and build them up while they're torn down. And we even pray for those, Lord, who are just sick on their bed of affliction, touch them in a matter way, and we give you the praise, honor. These are another blessing, rest in your name. Amen?
Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The character trait of the money is humility and knowledge in that achievement results from investment of others in my life, and I'm sure we all are aware of that. Now, we ask for the approval of the minutes from public hearing in the City Council, June 17, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approving those minutes, signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone like to speak on tonight's agenda? Please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Mike Whaley. Live at 1818 Autumn Court East. I come before you tonight as a citizen and also as an employee of the City of Prattville, but first, as a citizen, District 5, asking for you to support the Resolution Number 7 on tonight's agenda for the appointment of a Public Works Director for the City of Prattville. As an employee, I'm happy to see this on the agenda. Most of you all well know, I was heavily involved in a process to, hopefully, what I believe, bring us to this point, not fully responsible, but was a part of the initial part of the process. And I would like to say, for our mayor and our city staff, that I feel very comfortable with this process that we went through. I believe that we have a very competent, very capable Human Resources Department, City Clerk's office. We have very competent people in positions that lead our departments that are going to fall under the Public Works Director. And as we know, we have seen improvements over the past couple of years, and there's always opportunities for more improvements. But I'm very pleased, as a citizen, but also as an employee of the City of Prattville, to see this on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to come before you and show you my support for this, although I'm not the one that has to vote on it. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Whaley. Does any council member have any comments or questions for Ms. Whaley? Thank you. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes. First off, I'd like to thank Michael Whaley for coming down and speaking tonight. It's very refreshing when you have a true partner in Prattville to come down and speak in that manner. But pretty much I want to just lead off by talking about Public Safety, Public Works, General Government Equality of Life Departments that we have. And with bringing that up right out front, as everybody came through the front doors tonight, we were able to see Fire Engine 4. And had not been for this body being able to find the financial resources to purchase that vehicle, it would not be out there, and the Public Safety Department would not probably be as adequately protected or equipped as it is now. For the record, Fire Engine, the previous Fire Engine 4 was approximately 20 years old. That is our new Fire Engine 4 out front now, and its new, I guess, Call Letter or E7. And so, anyway, I also want to thank Chief Brown and all of his staff for helping make this happen, too, because without their professionalism, City of Prattville might not be quite as protected as it is today. But moving on along, I want to thank everybody that went out Tuesday night, Council President Wood, Counselor Boone, you joined me up on the stage to kick off the Creekside Concert Series. We had one counselor up here, I'm not going to mention his name, that started it off really by singing "Welcome" to everybody there, and I was very proud to stand up there beside him. But now, this series of small events came out of a series of meetings with hotel management and downtown businesses, and we'd gotten nothing but positive feedback on the first concert and looking forward to the next one. I'd like to thank everyone involved, invite you all to join us on July 8 and Creek Walk Gardens again to hear some great music that night, and certainly it's going to be another great event there. Friday, we celebrate this nation's birthday, as we always do here in our great city with the day's worth of events. The day will kick off with our annual parade at 9:00 a.m. Be a lot of volunteers out there a lot earlier, because Counsel Boone and I were out at a meeting earlier, and some of the volunteers would start a lot, lot earlier than the 9:00 a.m. The Lions Club is a part of that event, and some of them have already started preparation in that area. But the day will kick off with an annual parade at 9:00 a.m. by our Todd County Courthouse, our Grand Marshals, and our Desert Shield and Desert Storm Veterans. The Lions Club BBQ, the Cardboard Boat Races will commence at 10:00 a.m. at Pratt Park and Pratt Pool. We'll open the gates at the stadium at 6:00 p.m., and the patriotic program will begin at 7:00. The festivals will end with a fireworks display that's going to be pretty difficult to match what happened last year. You know, we had a lot of rain delays, Kelly Cook and her crew and everybody that was involved from various departments on that to make that, to pull that one off last year. If everybody, memory serves me right, it was quite a few delays, a lot of wet weather, but the fireworks was very spectacular, so it's going to be a very difficult feat to match again. But anyway, we'll open the gates at stadium at 6:00. Program begins at 7:00. The festival will end with the fireworks display that our citizens have come to expect and enjoy. City employees have been working very hard to prepare, and I thank them for all their efforts. Please be mindful of some of the high temperatures and the heat index, and please stay hydrated as we move about our city in our various respectful positions, but be especially conscious of our children, elderly, and pets who are moving at its hottest time of the year. Just want to remind everyone that our Heritage Park Fountain will be removed for refurbishing next week, and hopefully it will be back in roughly about six weeks, and just in time for future events on that, too. But on tonight's agenda, there are several items before you that recently that have addressed community improvements through cleanup of dilapidated structures. We're going into our, and going through our budget processes now, and I'd like to ask this body for your input on any and all projects we need to include in our projections for next year, whether it's related to the dilapidated housing or various other committees that you guys are related on. But moving on along with Item 7 that Michael Whaley referenced, too, it's, I do hope that you move forward with this tonight, an appointment for the Public Works Director. This effort has come out of a lot of hard work by this body, my office, and multiple departments. I ask you to please move forward, and thank you for all that you have done to make this project a reality. I think that the special assignments that have been done have really proved that there is a need, and it will show benefits for the near future and for long-term benefits for this city. And I can only say nothing but positives on that, but if you will move on that, I certainly would appreciate it, and I could, I believe that I can speak for several department heads that have communicated with this body to their support on that, and to me, that speaks volumes. Item 7, I'm sorry, that was Item 7. Item 8, our citizens have given a lot of positive feedback on our paving projects. Sixth Street has had more requests for paving than most other roads in our city, and I ask you please move forward on this item as well. Item 9, as we all know, College Heights is another one of our historic neighborhoods and our historic city. The city has already invested dollars in parks, infrastructures, but we need a master plan in order to do this right and comprehensively for the betterment of this entire area. This is the next step in fulfilling the requirements of planning grant that we were awarded by ADECA. So if you can move forward on that, I certainly would appreciate it, and that's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member have any questions for the mayor, comments at this time?
As Chair of the Fire Department, I want to say I appreciate what you've done to get the fire truck, but more than that, I want to say thank you to our men back there that keeps the old truck running. That truck was 20 years old, and if it wasn't for them keeping that truck running, we could have never waited as long as we had to to buy that truck, and then we'd have had to borrow the money at a time when we just couldn't borrow any money. So I really do, I know you all are in a hot, hot situation back there. It's miserable, you never get any attention, nobody ever thinks about you, but I want to say you thank you for keeping that truck running as long as you did to let us get caught back up as a board and do what we needed to do to be physically responsible for our city and pay cash for the fire truck. Thank you.
I totally agree. You know, without the due diligence of our Vehicle Maintenance Department, all of their hard work, they have been able to help move this city forward as we are a mechanized, service-oriented organization. And with all that said, I would really ask that we give not only that department, but all of our departments, a round of applause for all the work that they have done for this city. So if you will, please join me with that. Thank you. You know, it's, I guess it's moments like this, it does make this job pretty easy, but there's a lot of hard work that has, that goes on day in and day out, especially the difficulty of the temperature, the weather that is before this whole community. You know, one day you're, it's raining pretty much cats and dogs, and the next day you got the steam and the humidity, and it makes it very difficult, you know, to work outside, and so I certainly do appreciate all their hard work and due diligence there. Because of them, they actually are part, all of them are part of our economic development, because recently we did have some companies that come in and looked around, and all I got was a lot of accolades back on how well the city looked, the infrastructure, and just how well the city is moving forward. With that said, Mr. President, I will retire to my seat unless there's further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anyone have any other comments for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move into the report from Council on Special Committees, the mayor may not have recognized our economic development. A person that's come in the building, County Commissioner, so I take the point of privilege at this time, and ask you all to come forward, if you would like to come forward at this time. Good afternoon.
I'm honored to be in front of such a distinguished panel of good citizens. I'm Carl Johnson, County Commissioner. I think everybody knows that by now, and should say, good evening to the mayor, the Member City Council. I'm humbled and I'm proud to be here. I'm here on behalf of the Todd County Commission, as you are aware. The Todd County is actively working on Project FT, and FT is Fat Frack. I respectfully submit a request to you to partner with us in negotiation in order to recruit and obtain a more stable tax base for the benefit of the Todd County, the Todd County Board of Education. I look forward to working with you as we move forward on this process, and I thank you for having me here this evening. If you have any questions, you can ask me at another date. Right now, I can't answer them. But the project is ongoing, and I think all of you know it, and we're looking forward to working with you. Everything looks well.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We appreciate you taking the time. I do believe that you all had a meeting tonight also, and you left your meeting to come over here to talk to this body about working together, and I'm sure that the City Council would love to partner with the Todd County in trying to move this project forward.
I will take that back to my commission.
Thank you.
May I have a point of privilege? Please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you. A word on the street is that you had an appointment for District 3, District 5.
District 3.
District 3, okay. And I know I was at the swearing-in ceremony, but I just want to say congratulations on that, and it was Mr. Van Smith, and previous educator for the Todd County Board of Education, but just felt like it was appropriate time to have that brought into the record. So I think it's a great day for the Todd County.
It is. He'll serve us well, because he's been in the public service for many, many years. He's been the principal at Billingsley for years, so we're looking forward to working with him and continue to keep this county going. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and appreciate you, Mr. Doctor.
Welcome back to the altar.
We're good. You took first place.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming, and again, we look forward to working with you all. With that being said, we are going to our report from Council on Special Committees. Counselor Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
Yes, sir. Just real quickly, I'd like to invite audience members, as well as council members and anyone listening in TV land out there, to please come down, join us for the Fourth Festivities, beginning 9 o'clock with the parade. We'll be going all day, in the park, at the pool, through the fireworks, so please come and join us, participate, stay in Prattville, and celebrate the Fourth. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance Committee did meet this past month, had a very productive meeting discussing the city finances. Items before us tonight, we do agree that we are in the financial position to move forward with them, and as usual, let me thank each council member for continuing to meet and discuss the business of the cities and your various committees, so that you will have an understanding of what we need to do and how we can move forward. And a lot of people out there think we just come out here and vote on two-twos a month, but there are several meetings that goes on, and I appreciate you all taking the time to do that. Thanks. With that, we have a consent agenda of two items. One is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and order an abatement per entirety 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Resolution Number 2 is to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and order an abatement per entirety 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of placing these two items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand? And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. Would be any discussion on these two items? All in favor of adopting consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand? And the consent agenda has been adopted. We're going to our regular agenda. First one is an ordinance to rezone the property located at the end of Honeystuck Drive from R2, single-family residential to R3, single-family residential. It was held from June 3, 2014. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand? This ordinance is adopted. There won abstaining. Number 2 is an ordinance to rezone property located at the corner of Highway 82 West and Golson Road from FAR Forest Agricultural Recreation to be to general business. It was held from June 3, 2014 also. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand? This ordinance is adopted. Number 3 is an ordinance to amend the Prattville Code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 3, Section 2-9. Counselor Striplin, will you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Section 2-91, is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 2-91, Positions enumerated. The City Council shall appoint, define duties, set the terms of office, and establish salaries of the following. One, City Clerk. Two, City Treasurer, Finance Director. Three, Municipal Judge. Four, Chief of Police. Five, Chief of the Fire Department. Six, Parks and Recreation Director. Seven, Public Works Director. Eight, City Prosecutor. And nine, City Attorney. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passes and execution as provided by law. So moved. Mr. President?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. In order for the ordinance to be considered tonight, the rules must be suspended. We have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by raising your right hand? Rules have been now suspended. Will there be any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of this ordinance, signify by raising your right hand? And this ordinance is now adopted. Item Number 4, to authorize demolition of dilapidated structures known as the AAA Muffler Building and adjacent house located at 1254 South Memorial Drive at a cost of $11,000 and to award contract to Evan Thomas Incorporated to complete demolition. This item was held from June 3 and June 17, 2014 meeting. Would be any discussion on this item? Yes, sir, Mr. Chambliss.
Mr. President, most of the work on this lot has been done. It's not 100% complete, but it's real close, and I would suggest that we just go ahead and dispose of this item, because I think it has been taken care of.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? All in favor of adopting this ordinance, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed?
By raising your right hand?
And this item is adopted. Let's vote it down, rather. Number 5 is a resolution to affix the cost of demolition of dangerous and unsafe structure at 506 North Northington Street. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas 11-53B1 through 1153B-16 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, details the process for the City of Prattville to declare certain unsafe structures a public nuisance and to order their repair or demolish. And whereas 11-53B Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, requires that the city order to repair or demolish unsafe structures to be sent to the owner of the property and those having legal interest in the property. And whereas 11-53B-3 and 1153B-4 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, requires the property owners to repair or demolish unsafe structures within 45 days of being issued an order from the city or request a hearing before the City Council within 30 days of the order. And whereas 11-53B-3 Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the City of Prattville to repair or demolish unsafe structures if the owner fails to comply with the city order. Whereas 11-53B-5 Code of Alabama, 1955, as amended, permits the City Council to adopt a resolution affix the cost of demolition and establish a lien against the property. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that, one, that the Prattville Police Department's code enforcer officer declared the residential structure at 506 North Northington Street to be dilapidated structure on March 14, 2014. Two, the code enforcer issued an order to Caroline William Norman on March 24, 2014 to have the property repaired or demolished within 45 days of notice. Three, Caroline William Norman did not respond to a hearing before the City Council within 30 days of the notice nor repaired or demolished structure within 45 days of the notice. Four, the City of Prattville Police Department contracts for the demolition and clearing of the structure. Five, the City Prattville Police Department has determined that the total cost of demolition to be $3,453.08 and present structure to the City Council of the City of Prattville, Attachment A. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the cost totaling $3,453.08 for the demolition of the structure located at 506 North Northington Street presented by Prattville Police Department in the country, it should be established as a lien against the property located at 506 North Northington Street. The property is more properly described in Attachment B. Be it further resolved that the city attorney is authorized to file any action necessary to recover cost of demolition, the structure prudent to 11-53B ET SQU of the Alabama Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. I so move.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
So moved.
We have a second. Would be any discussion on this item? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item Number 6, to affix the cost of demolition of dangers and unsafe structure at 105 County Road 4. Counselor Chambliss, please.
Whereas Section 1153B-1 through Section 1153B-16 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, details the process for the City of Prattville to declare certain unsafe structures a public nuisance and to order their repair or demolition. And whereas Section 1153B-3 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, requires that the city's order to repair or demolish an unsafe structure be sent to the owner of the property and those having a legal interest in the property. And whereas Section 1153B-3 and 1153B-4 of the Code of Alabama, as amended, requires the property owners to repair or demolish the unsafe structure within 45 days of being issued an order from the city or request a hearing before the City Council within 30 days of the order. And whereas Section 1153B-3 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the City of Prattville to repair or demolish an unsafe structure if the owner fails to comply with the city's order. And whereas Section 1153B-5 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the City Council to adopt a resolution affixing the cost of demolition and establishing a lien against the property. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville finds that the Prattville Police Department code enforcement officer declared the residential structure at 105 County Road 4 to be dilapidated, to be a dilapidated structure on March 17, 2014. The code enforcement officer issued an order to the Williams Estate on March 24, 2014 to have the property repaired or demolished within 45 days of the notice. The Williams Estate did not request a hearing before the City Council within 30 days of the notice nor repair or demolish the structure within 45 days of the notice. The City of Prattville Police Department contracted for the demolition and clearance of the structure, and the Prattville Police Department has determined the total cost of demolition to be $1,678.88 and presented such to the City Council, Attachment A. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the cost totaling $1,678.88, $678.88, $100 for demolition of the structure located at 105 County Road 4 is presented by the Prattville Police Department is accurate and shall be established as a lien against the property located at 105 County Road 4. The property is more particularly described in Attachment B. Be it further resolved that the city attorney is authorized to file any actions necessary to recover the cost to demolish the structure pursuant to recover the cost to demolish the structure pursuant to section eleven fifty-three B of the Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Resolution number seven, just appoint the City of Prattville Public Works Director, Council Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City Council has identified the need for a public works director for the City of Prattville, and whereas in Resolution Book twenty-fourteen, page zero fifty-five, the City Council authorized the implementation of the hiring process for a public works director and said process is complete. And whereas the Public Works Division includes facilities, maintenance, vehicle maintenance, urban management, sanitation, and wastewater departments. And whereas the Public Works Director is a budgeted position, and whereas the Public Works Director is appointed position, now therefore be resolved that Randall Lucas is hereby appointed as Public Works Director at pay grade three fourteen dash twelve, with an expected start date of August eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Be it further resolved that the salary for the said position is approved in accordance with the pay plans adopted by the Prattville City Council. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. At the end of our meeting, we have three items, I will go ahead and say, Mr. Lucas is with us tonight, but because we only have three items, we were going to go ahead and finish this agenda, because I'm sure he wanted to address those rather lengthy, and we want to give him as much time as he desires. Thank you. Next item. The resolution to enter into agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to provide construction, engineering, and inspection services for the resurfacing of Sixth Street from U.S. thirty-one to Lower Kingston Road for project number S.T.P. double eight dash U.S. twelve, six thousand and parenthesis, in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty cent, net costs to the city not to exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars twenty-six cent. Council Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has identified the need to resurface Sixth Street from U.S. thirty-one to Lower Kingston Road, and whereas the City of Prattville has entered into an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation to have this work performed, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation requires construction, engineering, and inspection services for this work, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation has approved Sane Associates Incorporated to perform these duties, and whereas the Alabama Department of Transportation will reimburse the City of Prattville for eighty percent of said cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into an agreement with Sane Associates Incorporated to perform C.E.N.I. services for the resurfacing of Sixth Street from U.S. thirty-one to Lower Kingston Road for project number S.T.P. A.A. dash U.S. twelve, parenthesis, six hundred, in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars thirty cents, net cost to the city not to exceed thirteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars twenty-six cents, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal year twenty-fourteen budget line item capital project funds slash miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and on behalf of the City of Prattville. I so move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number nine is a resolution to ask the mayor to enter into an agreement for professional services with Lord Aitken Sergeant to develop a neighborhood revitalization plan for the College Heights and Martin Luther King Neighborhoods at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars, net cost to the city five thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Council Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of planning activities to set goals and objectives for the revitalization of Martin Luther King Junior Drive, College Heights Neighborhood, and whereas CDBG project number L.R. dash P.F. dash P.L. dash thirteen dash zero zero two was awarded for the development of neighborhood revitalization plan for the College Heights and Martha, Martin Luther King Neighborhoods. And whereas the City of Prattville issued eleven requests for qualifications for professional planning services for said project, and whereas five requests for qualifications were submitted, and whereas Lord Aitken Sergeant was rated the most qualified to provide said professional services at a cost not to exceed forty thousand, net cost to the city not to exceed five thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby authorizes and empowers the mayor to enter into a contract for professional service with Lord Aitken Sergeant at a cost not to exceed forty thousand dollars, net cost to the city not to exceed five thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal twenty-fourteen budget line item planning department miscellaneous contract services. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. Item number ten is a resolution to ratify and affirm the purchase of one twenty-fourteen Pitts L.B. thirty-five dash twenty-six fixed neck lowboy from Warrior Tractor through N.J.P.A. purchasing cooperative contract number zero six zero three eleven dash J.D.C. for the engineering department at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand eighty dollars. Council Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the engineering department had a need for one twenty-fourteen Pitts L.B. thirty-five dash twenty-six fixed neck lowboy, and whereas said lowboy was ordered through N.J.P.A. purchasing cooperative contract number zero six zero three eleven dash J.D.C. from Warrior Tractor at a cost of thirty-five thousand eighty dollars, and whereas said equipment was budgeted for the engineering department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby ratifies and affirms the purchase of one twenty-fourteen Pitts L.B. thirty-five dash twenty-six fixed neck lowboy at a cost of thirty-five thousand eighty dollars from Warrior Tractor and/or John Deere through N.J.P.A. contract zero six zero three eleven dash J.D.C. from fiscal year twenty-fourteen budget line item engineering department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Would be in a discussion on item number ten. All in favor of adoption, signify by raising your right hand? And this item is adopted. That exhausts our agenda. At this time, before we move to comments from persons present, we have just adopted resolution number seven to appoint Mr. Randall Lucas. At this time, we will allow Mr. Randall Lucas to come forward and address the city.
Council President, I'd just like to say thank you very much for having me here today, and I look forward to serving the citizens of Prattville and the city of Prattville. Thank you very much.
Is that it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, I'm sure the council will be glad to have you aboard, they just voted you in. I was looking forward to this long speech, so that's why I went on with the agenda, but we are glad to have you, Mayor. We know that this was a long process. Let me thank the council members, as well as the citizens, or whoever played a part in selecting the candidates. We all did a great job. It was hard work, and I applaud you for what you've done. Mr. Lucas, we wish you well, we hope that you have a long stay with us. Does any council member like to say anything to Mr. Lucas at this time? Well, you got it coming later. Thank you.
If the council won't speak, I certainly will. I do want to thank the council for all the hard work, all the various departments that had a portion of helping this move forward. I want to welcome Mr. Lucas to the family, and actually go ahead and present him with a pen. He is retiring from the military, and a lot of times, they actually stamp this into their chest, so at that point, this point in time, I'd like to go ahead and do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, but there again, thank you.
Just saying, we have comments from persons present on any item that they wish to discuss, please come forward to the microphone. Mayor, you have closing comments?
Just hope that I see everybody at the Fourth of July celebrations, but if not, I hope you have a great Fourth, you know, birth of our, of our nation, and I think it's worth all the celebration that we can give to her. Thank you, have a good week.
Thank you. Council Striplin?
No, sir.
Council Brown?
No, sir.
Council Sterns?
No, sir.
Council Chambers?
No, sir.
Council Bowles?
I will not be attending the next council meeting, I'm actually going to try my best to take our family on vacation, if you will. And what's your cell number? Y'all have a great night.
Council Bone?
Yes, sir.
Our next council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, July fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six P.M. Again, as always, thank you all for what you do for the City of Prattville. I hope you have a great Fourth weekend. I will not be available to be here for death and family members, so I will be away also, but we pray that everything will go well with you all. With that being said, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand? Meeting is now adjourned.